Let's go, Council. Ben Norton with the lead audit meeting. Please move on.
That's great. God, how grateful we are to you for your saving and keeping grace. We thank the Lord for the privilege to come before this city as a united body to do the work of this great city that you blessed as well. We thank the Lord for the opportunity to represent our citizens. We pray, Lord, that you would be with those who were in crisis, who have experienced fires and sickness, Lord, that we've been so amazed by. And we just pray, Lord, that you would undertake for their needs. We thank the Lord for our servicemen and women who diligently stand in harm's way for our freedom. We pray, Lord, for our officials, Lord, state and national. We pray, Lord, for this body. Pray, Lord, for our mayor. Give him strength, Lord, and help us, Lord, to face the challenges of the days ahead. We pray to Jesus. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fight for the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council has had time to review the minutes from the May 7, 2020 regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Counsel? If there are none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of a resolution on a local government lighting project agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Alastair for the installation of a new lighting system for the proposed roundabout project at Byd Boys. Our fearless city manager will present.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. Tonight is where Mayor Matheson stated this is a lighting agreement and resolution that the Georgia DOT would like us to enter into with them. We have similar arrangements such as the lighting on I-75 of Alastair Corvus. You know, we struck a deal with them many years ago that said if they would put them up, construct them, pay for all that type of cost, then we would replace bulbs and maintain them. So it's a very similar agreement, except this is for the forthcoming roundabout project, which is still very heavy on the mind of DOT and they still plan to do that. They're reworking plans as we speak now. And we'll be ready to present some, I think, in the next maybe six months, some of their plans. So this agreement is for them to construct, buy the material, and put the lighting in at the two roundabouts. Then we will take it from there and we'll maintain it in the future. One of the areas that we agreed to when we did the I-75 is, like, DOT would like you to say, I'm going to use an example, a number of $5,000 a year. Then they'll come by every now and then and see if a light needs to be replaced or something needs to be maintained based on that annual cycle. Well, things on those lights don't happen every year. So we felt that was a waste of our money. So we're proposing to keep with the current structure we do now. We are third party with a local electrical company here. And as we know, there's something needed to be replaced or maintained, we'll call it on an as needed basis. So that takes away that annual cycle or one year. Especially the first couple of years, it's not doing anything to maintain because the bulbs last fairly long time. So they've breached that, and that is still the structure they'd like to build. So have answered questions.
So Mark, we're not... I mean, if there's no plan in place that's been finalized, correct? I mean, that's my understanding.
That's correct.
Okay. So this approval for this resolution is just saying wherever they decide to put the lights, we will maintain them?
That's correct, but we will have input into that as well as with Georgia Power. This is also in conjunction with Georgia Power.
We have input into where the lights go?
Yeah, well, yes. Well, that's why they're reventing some of the designs now because last meeting last year, we made some suggestions and they went back to the drawing block and making those amendments. So we will have some say-so into that. But the root of the bottom line, Counsel Norton, is that we have to provide the lighting as a municipality anyway. So if we can get them to pay for it upfront and we just pick up the maintenance costs. But we will have some say-so with that. Of course, there are extras to work in place that then the Georgia Power know where to place the lighting holes.
You were saying about the spike and that we're not... Were you asking that we give them $5,000?
That's... No, no. I was using $5,000 as an example. Some cities, they'll do it in projects like this, they'll just pay DOT or flat out Georgia Power, and I'm just using them like $5,000. And they'll pay, they'll give them that money each year as part of an annual contract. Then they would come by a couple of times a year and see if anything needs to be maintained. And DOT would use that annual allotment that the city gave them to make those corrections. Well, as I said, they're not honestly easy to maintain. And we've got a really good deal worked out with our local electrical contractor here. So we're going to pay on an as needed basis, not pay any Georgia Power nor DOT an annual fee to cover and maintain.
So as the lights go out, that's it. But what I was looking at, reading after that, I was just thinking, if that was their project, why can't they maintain it? But I understand what you're saying. We're lacking some kind of input.
That's right.
And that's it. So, okay, so instead of just giving them anything, they come out as often.
That's right. We know what is happening. We'll contact our local... That's my question. We got like, I think the contract for bulb replacements, $234, much, much less than any type of strike. We pay the organization on an annual basis. But the bottom line again is that we have, it's our responsibility to provide the lighting.
And just one more question. What kind of budget, where would that be at in the future? What would that come out, I mean, would it be like a user pay?
It would be like, as far as funding and maintenance, it'll be in the general fund through our engineering, where we pay our, where we, general fund through our engineering, where we pay the Georgia Power light bill for all the streetlights. So it'd be that part of that budget. And if we were paying to be, we are to be directly, be part of our... That's right. Absolutely, Counsel. That's right.
So the new lights that were just installed there, I guess, what, two years ago? Something like that, a year and a half ago? Right? At Byd Boys? Yes, at Byd Boys. Is that correct?
I don't think so. We're talking about the...
No, not signal lights. We're talking about the actual lighting project for roundabouts, not signal lights.
Right. Signal lights?
No. Not the signal lights. Those stay.
These are the lighting of the street.
Street lights.
To appropriately light the...
Light the street. I just want everybody that's listening to understand that we're not talking about replacing the signal lights that we're talking about replacing, or we're talking about the lighting itself, the light, the actual light, like the street light. DOT is funding all that.
They'll plug up a little more like I-75, a taller type of lighting structure. That's what we're speaking of. Now, as far as traffic signals, there is a possibility when the design comes up that we can mine and sew traffic signals because the purpose of the roundabout is not to stop traffic. It's just to defer the flow and sew the flow.
But no saving for paid for by DOT.
That's right.
So it's no, we can not waste the money.
That's right. If this is their route and all of the costs go to them, anything that's been done on their route.
I just want everybody to know that.
That's right.
This is...
The council has a poll to be replaced after they missed the roundabout.
That would be us. That would be us. We have more questions.
No other questions? Motion to adopt a resolution and approve the local government lighting project agreement.
Second.
Second.
Tim Harrell, motion. Second by Ben Norton. All in favor, show your hands. Unanimous? Thank you. Move on. Item number four, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. It's consideration of bid for the Bay Meadows Drive industrial improvement projects. Mark Barber again will present.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The agenda tonight is part of our SPOS 7 funding. This Bay Meadows sidewalk project was originally going to have, we originally had discussed and programmed in SPOS 8. But because we had some savings on some projects in '07, we decided to go ahead and move this project forward with Bay Meadows. It is a nice straight shot that will connect Eastmore to East Park Avenue. The Bay Meadows already has permanent guttering there, which makes it ideal for the sidewalk. The sidewalk will be laid on the east side of the street. This is where there's fewer utility holes and obstacles to work around. The sidewalk will be on the east side. We did look at some pictures today. There is a resident there that has a picket, a little white picket fence in front of their house. It looks like it might be in the right way, so we'll probably help him or then move that back some. So east side of the, east side of the highway is where we'll, we'll put that. Should be like we did, two feet to the sidewalk beach, should be a space in there, generally two feet from the curb. Like we've done our other sidewalk projects, a little strip of grass where we're there. So I think it's going to be a great project. We're working hard to get that connectivity going through all areas of town. So we're excited that we're going to bump it up on the project, on the capital outlay program. We have any extra questions?
I only have one, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you answer everything I had written down earlier? How much time is in the project contract? Is it giving us a time limit on how long this project will take?
It usually is going to take about 30 days to ramp the project up. We bid it out May 8th and the Southland Contractors, who I'm asking you tonight to approve the contract, to the Southland Contractors. And then it takes 30 days to mobilize, get ready. And the problem right now, we're in our ramp season, so we didn't give them some believed way in there to get it done. But it's such a straight shot project. If we don't really run into the obstacle, I think it can be done fairly quick, quicker than some of our others.
Thank you, sir.
It's a much needed project. There's a lot of the traffic in this area.
There is.
It's a lot of the lights, but...
There is. And Counsel Ward and Cody and myself, we talked about it too. You know, this is going to be a great project to enhance that neighborhood. So we need our, we need the neighbors to have, to embrace it and clean the neighborhood up along with our city marshals. We're going to be hot and heavy in that area. So tonight, I'm just asking that you will approve this contract with Southland Contractors to the amount of $114,329.60, which that includes a 10% contingency for things that may come up that we're not aware of.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve a little bid submitted by Southland Contractors for the total of $114,329.60?
So, whoops, sir.
We've got Cody for first, Senator Tulley for second. All in favor, raise your hands. View. Unanimous?
Great.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five. Again, the funding request, consideration of a request to purchase two emergency standby generators for the utilities department. This is a big one. Mark Barber will again present.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I'm not before you talking about generators. I know that's kind of the topic of conversation with us recently. But these are a little bit different from the ones that we've been purchasing over the past, past few, last year, year and a half. If you remember, we've had, we were kind of trying to shoot it out with the purchase of these generators at some of our list stations. But I just, Darrell and I felt as we looked at it, that that just really wasn't the wisest thing to do. We want to get generation, backup generation everywhere, every list station. And as a matter of fact, the consent order agrees with us and they want us to do so as well. So we'll continue to do that. We're about, we got like 37 list stations around the city. We've updated emergency generation to about 15, 16 of those, so about halfway there. We'll continue to do that through the rest of the year. These two tonight are huge. As you can see on the screen, this is what the generators look like. We need one for our master list station at Gordo Road. Yes, I was surprised, and Darrell and I both were surprised to find out that this was constructed, that it did not include any type of backup generation. But what it does have, the medigaming factory here has had two power sources, one from Georgia Power, one from Concord EMS. So we depended on that. But I will tell you that there's been some past times when both of those power sources have failed. And I will, my head will like Darrell's, if we do not get backup generation. If we do not get some backup generation to these, they're very expensive. When Darrell and I started looking about two years ago, we realized that Gordo Road did not have any backup generation other than the two power sources. We got quotes of about a million and a half each. That's when our good friend Terry Coleman stepped in and said, hey, let me see if I can find a grant to help you with this, an EDA grant. He's tried, we've submitted, we've not been successful. So what we did, a few months back, we looked out on our Georgia contract procurement site, you know, where we have the state contracts, which we're allowed to procure from. We tend to do that locally with programs I personally did, but we can purchase from the state contract. So we found these through Yancey Power, through a consortium around the nation that records its 5,000 local generators. So basically what's happening now is we've been able to use the economies of scale of other communities throughout the nation to get these, to get these two generators. One generator for the Gordo master list station is $470,000. The second one from Mud Creek is $449,000. The difference, you may ask, what's the difference of the $21,000 price difference? That's because the one at Mud Creek is already set up to have a switch that will automatically switch it from regular power to backup power. Whereas the other ones got, Gordo will have to be made into that because right now with some of our generators have manual switches, we won't go there and manually make that switch. So eventually everything will be automatically have a switch. So that's the difference in the pricing. But when we saw the price, we just couldn't, we couldn't let it pass by. So we did our homework. It's Yance by Yancey Power, a very reputable generation company. So tonight, I'm asking you to approve the purchase of two emergency standby generators from Yancey Power Systems for a total of $919,000. I will add that this does not include installations. Once we get these generators back and received, we will bid out the installation with a local electrical professional here. This is, as you saw, the size of them, it's much more than we can handle in the house. We have any extra questions? Yes?
Is these, is this generator going to be located, or is that going to be where you could carry it and air it if you need to?
They're not mobile. These appear will be on the premises, on the campus of Mud Creek, and they will be on the top of which you see on Gordo by the Y. You see, they'll be set up there on a nice platform, probably sheltered, built and protected. So, but it's not mobile.
Is that what they're going to come with?
They will. We did, they, we'll make it to do that. Yes, sir.
Darrell was going to question you.
And that, again, that was the price difference because one area is already set up for that. Mud Creek is, Gordo Road is going to have to be made to do that. So that's why the $21,000 price difference.
I remember at least one of the ones we purchased last meeting was mobile.
Yeah. The one, the one we did last meeting was for with Okuchi. It was much smaller.
Yeah.
And it was mobile because we didn't want the chemicals to corrode the parts of the...
Well, okay, that's a good question because I know we mentioned that, right, you mentioned about mobile ones. We got them. I thought we were getting a little more, we just have one mobile.
And we've got several mobiles. We've got several mobiles.
And I know you said we was going to have one for Gordo Road because I mentioned a little bit earlier, then you said yes, one of the mobile ones would be used.
The ones that we have right now, Counsel Norton, really wouldn't work as, it wouldn't do much good at Gordo Road because the size of it was 250 kilowatt. These are 1500 kilowatt.
I understand.
So it wouldn't, it really wouldn't do that. And these are so large, they can't be mobile to do that.
So I'm asking this question. We did get more than one mobile generator last meeting. Are we going to get it?
Well, if you bid on one mobile generator with Okuchi, the other ones were permanent generators for other list stations. Like I told you earlier, we have 37 list stations and those were for permanent, for the smaller list stations, which were permanent.
Why do you have to move that?
And if you do that with mobile, then you're right. Remember, we have a few mobile ones that until we can get everybody on board, we can take the time of the storm. It's just inconvenient and time consuming to, you know, to haul it to one of these list stations and hook it up during the storm. So you're right, we do have several mobile units, smaller units.
So we have 37 total list stations. With, I guess, with these two, if we approve it, will make us around, what, 18?
We've got 37 regular list stations.
And 18 of them will be set up after we approve this for automatic days, for automatic...
Everything eventually, yeah. Counsel will give everything off. Eventually we will, not quite there yet. We still got some modifications to make to the smaller list stations to make that happen. But that would be something that would kind of be got separately to get everything to that automatic switch.
For these?
Yeah. That would be part of the installation.
If it is working, it would maybe be worse when we don't have these two.
That's absolutely right.
Because sometimes we have them also powered, powered them.
That's absolutely right. Like I said, we've been like, we have lost power to both of those sources a few weeks ago that the storm entered. And Darrell and I, we get our bags, bags of potatoes chips, get the whole bag and wait for the storm to be over. So I think we can also better know that these two large, specifically the master list station in Gordo has, has several backup power to keep those spills from happening. Absolutely.
Well, Mark, and I think too, we can sleep better knowing that those are in place, but the price that we're paying for these is less than half of what we originally thought it might be.
That's correct.
When I saw that, oh, well, that's a lot of money, $99,000.
That's right.
Then you think, $1.5 million for just one, and we're getting two for less than that. That's astounding. I appreciate the work that you helped did and researching that. I know that doesn't happen out of mind.
Yeah, and I will appreciate that. But yeah, it's an incredible deal. You know, part of the original one and a half million each did include the paddles that sit on and the shelter. That's just going to be some minor cost. So I think probably when it's all said and done, we'll have everything in place. We both, Darrell and I, asked to make about $1,300,000. So we wanted to cut it in half. So thank you for that.
What's the lifespan of this monster?
Darrell? There's a two-year warranty. What's the lifespan, Darrell?
30 years? The good thing is that we were able to do this at SPOS 7 funds.
That's correct.
And our funds are used usually.
Absolutely. And let me say this, we're not giving up on finding a grant. We're hoping to find a grant that's going to reimburse us this as well, or some portion of it. So we're not giving up on, we're still trying to find the money for this project.
Counsel, any other questions?
30-year warranty and...
Two-year warranty. And 30-year life span.
Life span. Okay.
And that's because, you know, we're only going to use it in emergency time. It's not going to be something that's out there running all the time just during emergencies.
Oh, next question. Maintenance of it, and then we got the warranty on it, but maintenance of it, that's going to be provided by...
I agree. Once it's installed and we understand the electrical makeup of it, then we will maintain it.
That's what I heard you say. I thought I heard you say that that was too much for us to handle to install it, but after we get it installed, we're...
It's just like a disassembled system. Once it's all installed, has a training, and then they do it. And if there's something complicated for our in-house folks, if we have ready in-house folks, then we'll go to a third party.
Counsel, can I get a motion to approve the purchase of two emergency standby generators from Yancey Power Systems in a grand total of $919,000 even?
Sure. Here.
Second.
Counsel Pickers. Counsel Cuddy. Counsel Persson. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Mark, stay put. In the citizens to be heard portion, there were no emails sent in this go-around, so we'll move right on to the city manager's report.
I'll be brief. I'll be brief. The same with my report as well, Mayor. Just wanted everybody to know, we had a couple of works. Great, great time with our fellow mothers and boys. They do, so many times we're overlooked and feel underappreciated, but just having this group of ladies and gentlemen put their heart and soul into their job. And so we've had a fun week with them. But just, you know, just don't let this weekend, remember them every, every week of the year because they do an incredible, incredible job for us. And then we're going to have our first city event on June 13th. We're going to reintroduce our makers market back. It's going to be our first city event downtown. This, you know, was very popular. Folks have been asking for it to come back. If things change by some reason with huge spikes or whatever, we'll change. But right now, we're planning June, Saturday, June 13th for the makers market. And we've got a full roster. Every vendor swap we have is full and we have a waiting list. So we're looking forward to that and, you know, asking you to come out and support that. And of course, it'll be all safety. We're going to have all the, the social distancing and all those type of things. We'll take that in place and set up.
How many people do we have?
I think we have room for 35. I think 35. And it's full and we've got some that want it. So we got to kind of, that is a little different now because of the virus. We can't have as many folks out there who would like. And that's fine.
Is that it?
That's it. That's it.
Move on. Counsel comments?
I have a couple. But Mark, have the, you said auto-carrying backup, believe me?
We have not yet. We have not yet. We're going to hold that out until June 12th with Governor Kent's declaration. So right now, we're not having any events at Mathes, nor holding any group meetings in our annex.
Okay. And other, when, when, when would we have a budget for a year of boost and stuff?
You will be getting that. I'm going to get you those dates tomorrow. We've got it in concrete this afternoon when the budget areas will be. And we got it set up to adopt the last meeting in June. And we're still trying to get it. Here's one thing we are thinking about, just given the situation we're in. The last two years, we've got it down and whatnot. So what I'm going to suggest, what I was going to suggest in my email and the warning, guys, is we just provide some snacks and skip the supper and just get through, make sure we get through with it whatnot. Would that be okay with everybody?
Yes.
That idea? Because that way we'll be sure we'll get through it. And it's sort of in a different format this year that I think that you guys are going to like. I'm going to spend more time talking about the capital, projects that we have going on. Yeah, because sometimes we get the tail end of the operations side. And the operations side are just what it is. It's just operations. There's nothing that too much of us can do about that. Capital is what, that's the big dollars. That's what we need to be spending time on and getting your feedback. So we're going to start with capital projects this year as opposed to talking about personnel and all those things that really, I mean, they go into the budget. But capital is what we need to focus on. Yes, sir?
Do you think it might be a good idea? I know some years ago, you had allowed council members, you know, one and two at a time, to come in and meet with budget staff and get a kind of first deep dive into it before the areas. Something we might consider good.
Yeah, absolutely. That process won't change. You'll get as much detail to look at as you want. It will be detailed from the floor and you can look at a summary if you like, or you can look at how many pencils, pens, whatevers, and then we'll give it, just like we got in the past. And feel free to stop by and any questions you have regarding... We'll have a little different format on the summary too that may be a little bit easier to read. So absolutely.
Will you talk about the youth council? What a great job they've been doing. They did art work in the city.
Oh, yeah. They, they, they're just a tremendous bunch of young people in our community. They, they did a little art work and little projects. Even though they haven't been meeting, they still felt they wanted the community to know, hey, we're still here and we're still working. And they've done a fantastic job. I just say it's kind of short for, for this group this year.
Well, in any kind of way, what the youth council is doing, the art work and different saying, can we put that on Facebook so the public can see?
Absolutely.
You know, that thing because a lot of kids are interested in being a part of it. But if you see what the kids are doing, that would be great by the public to see.
I agree. Absolutely. We've got to tell our own story, right, Counsel members?
Oh, one question. Listen, what's going on with the anti-fan, with the anti-vaxxer, trying to look forward to getting that?
We are. And at the budget hearing, we was going to show you some renderings that we've done since we got back from retreat. We had collaborated with the University of Georgia and some of their civil engineering students there, before their students, that had just listened to what we said we'd like to see on that lot out there. And they've done a great rendition of that. And we could use that to save us some money on the designs, but we'll tell you that, you know, we'd have to cut back with the budget. I'll let you know that, that I had to reduce some of what we had budgeted, if I would tell you now. But at least I think we got enough to get us a start at the end of the year, but that's what we are with that.
Thank you.
Any further counsel comments?
Yeah, just waiting.
All right. So I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion to give me a return, regular meeting to enter into executive session for the purpose of... meeting to enter into executive session with the purpose of. Good work. Good work.